Welcome to a public hearing for the purpose of receiving input regarding proposed sign ordinance amendments. I do want to make a note before we begin, because Mr. Eastman and I consulted about this. I noted it when I was reviewing the materials as did Mr. Eastman and I think we have received. I know we've received public comment to this effect. There is an item in Chapter 19, Part 107, which is the segment that prohibits signs of certain types in all zoning districts. And the item is Letter J, if you look at the draft. This concerns signs painted directly on any surface that is not a separate sign substrate. So essentially, if you had a building in the historic district that was painted, now it would here be that it's painted, that you can paint a sign directly on it. That item J was a previous, it was from the existing ordinance. It was inadvertently left in in one of the drafts that had been removed. It is intended to be removed. You will not be prohibited. This is something that was raised. I received an email today. And candidly, this was something that came up seven years ago when we started this discussion, was whether or not someone should be able to paint a sign directly on to the surface of the structure. And we intentionally have removed item J. And when this draft is published, when Mr. Eastman processes the publication, it will reflect that that prohibition has been removed.
To capture the intention of the Borough Council following our work session.
September.
In September.
And that had been a topic, because there were some issues about whether or not you could consider certain things assigned. So for instance, the issue of the mural was raised, and it's not considered a sign under the ordinance, but you can paint directly on. That would be permitted. Now, again, you have to understand that within the historic district, if you have a basenary structure that is not traditionally painted, that does not excuse you from the historic district requirement that you essentially, while that you go through the hard process, but I will tell you that at the end of the day, if you have a traditionally non-painted masonry structure, you're going to be told not to paint it. And that's really because the, that's the way that the structure needs it to be. But I did want to mention that before we go to public comment, because I expect that to be erased. So the main purpose of this session is to receive public comment. At this point, I would like to open the floor and ask folks to use the mic. Give your name, address, and try to limit your remarks, please, to five minutes so that you get around the room. Public comment related to the proposed sign ordinance revision. Yes, please do not be shocked.
Thank you for clearing that up, because that was one of the reasons that I wanted to bring this up tonight. I also, one of the other, and the letter that I sent in from Sam Weiser, to give me some clarification, I would just like some more time, you know, for the other businesses in town to be able to see the sign ordinance. Just the timing of it, like having 19 days to review it for myself was very tedious to get, you know, some clarification for myself. And I didn't even have really the time to reach out to Borough Council members and ask for clarification, or even Harry. So that would be one thing that I would like to see, if we could just table this for after the holidays so that we have time, like all businesses in the borough. Because I'm sure that many wouldn't be aware that the sign ordinance is being in a revised format right now. Because I wouldn't have been aware of the hearing tonight if I hadn't done the right to know request to get the information. I wouldn't have never seen it in the Gettysburg Times. I know that's procedural, but I think it's really important for businesses to be able to have that, you know, voice with the council, to be able to bring up any concerns they have. Because I also have one with the square footage that I think is in that language as well, where I have a side wall that's very, very large. And my understanding from the ordinance, and this may be incorrect, is that I wouldn't be able to utilize that side to put, whether it's an advertisement, a visual advertisement, or language advertisement on my building. So I don't know if that's, can be cleared up tonight, or that was just another concern I had, because I think now the language is limiting us to 50 square feet only on the front of a building versus being able to use any sides that we have. And there's probably a lot of buildings in town, but mine is one that has a very large sidewall. That's not an alley.
Do you want me to clarify that for you?
If that's what we can do tonight, or...
I just think it's appropriate. So during our discussions in September, and we began discussing this again in earnest in July of 2022. So the most recent iteration of this has gone on for that amount of time.
Can you please speak up?
I, I can, yeah. The most recent iteration of this has been going on since July of 2022. The item I believe you're discussing is how you gain your square footage of signs that are permitted, and that's based on linear feet of your lot frontage. And in the previous ordinance, you could add two public-facing street frontages to gain more square footage, 50 and 50. And that was totaled to a maximum of 50. That only deals with streets and alleys. It is not just the building exposure. So it does not affect that in any way.
So I would not be able to paint on that side?
It has nothing to do with where you can place it. It has to do with how much square footage you're allocated. So if you're talking about, say, the front of your structure, however many linear feet that is, that's how many square feet you're permitted.
On the entire building, though?
Correct.
So that was one of the, that I brought up in the letter, is that that's kind of arbitrary. It's just a number that's been thrown out there. So what is the reasoning behind not being able to put anything then, per se, on the side of the building? If I'm only, because I would only be allowed 30 square feet, because the front of my building's only 30 square feet wide, but it's also very tall. It's also very long. So that's, again, scale-wise, it's not a very large amount. And then I also have a tree in front of it. So when you talk about visual, like advertising, it's very, very hard to advertise a business with such a small amount of space when I have like an entire side that could potentially be utilized for advertisement.
Yeah, much of what you're raising is addressed in the purpose and intent of the ordinance. But I just want to clarify that there's nothing here that would prohibit you from placing a sign on the side of your structure. It's just that you don't get to count the additional footage. And candidly, never would have been able to, because there's no alley there. And that's all, it's really kind of boiled down in the purpose and intent of why you have an ordinance of this nature.
So what exactly is the purpose and intent of that, then?
There are probably a dozen or more items listed. I would literally have to go back and read it. It deals with all the different components of what makes the community, you know, aesthetically pleasing viable. I mean, there are a lot of items there. It's not really the appropriate time for me to go through that. It'd be more appropriate for you to read it.
I did read it. That's why I'm not understanding, which is why I'm asking if we could have like a workshop or a town hall in the future where we can come with questions and get that clarity. Because, I mean, I don't know who, I guess, council, Harry, I'm not sure who drafted the ordinance, but most of us aren't lawyers, business owners aren't lawyers. So we, to know what the intent is and the reasoning behind it, you know, we would like to have that cleared up to us before it comes to a vote, is really what I'm asking. Because I personally have waited since 2020 to get to this point. And I feel for myself, even though I wasn't aware that this was going on in July of 2022, and to me, it only just came to my, you know, September of 2023 is when I first realized that you're working on the sign ordinance again. And it's frustrating for me as a business owner, because I did email the previous council president, Jake Schindel, didn't get any, like, nobody reached out to me and said, hey, by the way, we're working on the sign ordinance. Do you have any input for it? And I think, you know, we have a task force for the rezoning, but business owners aren't being asked to be part of this discussion for the sign ordinance. And I just think that that's really important for us, because it affects our livelihoods. And it's also part of the character of the downtown, is we, you know, we have very unique buildings. We invest a lot of money in them. I've invested a ton of money in my building to make it more aesthetically, more historically relevant. So I just want the opportunity for us to say, here's our concerns, or this is what we would like to do. Why can't we do this? Because I haven't had the time to go through and read every historic preservation briefs, but it does ask for a lot of looseness in an ordinance, to give flexibility based on specific structures. We'd still have to go through the process of applying for a sign and getting the approval of council or HARB. You would see that. It's not like we're just going to go out there and do anything we want to do, but allowing more, less restriction, because we have a lot of barriers. Like, like I said, there's a tree in front of a building. So I have a little sign, a big tree, you know, can't use this side for a square footage. And when you look at that scale, I mean, I don't know how tall my building is. It's three stories. So you're talking about having something, you know, like, basically like a black dot in the middle of my hand on a big space. It's just, I'm looking at the scale. I don't know what would be the average scale for a sign in comparison to the size of the building. So I would just ask for more time, and I'll let the next person speak. But that would be my recommendation tonight, or, or request, is that we have a little bit more time to work with council on this. Thank you.
Public comment.
Good evening. And yes, it's been a long time. If you look at the ordinance number, it's 2016 that it started. So I did some comments for the Planning Commission, but they were not really felt they were in a position to go into detail on a sign ordinance. They did discuss the mural versus sign and painted thing. The mural thing was kind of interesting to me. So I called the City of Harrisburg Planning Department, because I know they have murals all over town and mural events. And they actually don't regulate murals. You know, if something has commercial message, then it's a sign. But they don't have any rules about murals, and that's on your, your handout. But as far as the comments I had, one was the, those temporary signs that contractors put out. In here, it says they can be in place for 60 days. And if the job takes two days, you've got a contractor sign out there for free advertising for a lot longer than need be. There's a part that says projecting signs shall not extend more than four feet from any building or structure, or into any alley. But then down in section E, on the other side, says no signs shall project or extend over any pedestrian walkway. So in one place, it's saying you can't see over a pedestrian walkway. And in the other, it's giving a distance. So conflicts. The window sign says, window sign should not cover or obstruct more than 40% of the surface area of the window glass. And is that cumulative? Meaning you could have three signs and not cover 40% of the glass, or just one sign? So that's something that needs to be clarified. And then, on the other side, in E8, as far as it is being proposed to date, the build-to-lines are going to be deleted in the new zoning. I know it hasn't happened yet, but that's, build-to-lines are referenced in number eight. And the other part, this kind of goes with the sidewalk ordinance. As far as where you can put a sign, like right by the curb, whether it's a yard sale sign, or a political sign, or a contractor sign, this says that you can't put signs in the planting strip. And I know there's a, you know, there's a right-of-way for the borough, but I don't know what all that, does that allow you to not specify that people can't have signs? Or is that just a pedestrian right-of-way? So between that and the sidewalk ordinance, which is also been on the back burner for a while, it would be nice to have that information. I don't know where to find what the right-of-way says the borough can do. I don't know how to look that up, so.
I mean, I can tell you from past discussions that the borough can prohibit many things from the right-of-way, like you cannot construct a stormwater BNP in the right-of-way. There are many things you cannot do on the right-of-way.
Yeah, and I just would like to see a document that says that, without asking Sarah the right-to-know request.
Would be in, there is, there are provisions in the Borough Code regarding that in terms of the street rights-of-way of the, of the borough.
So in the Gettysburg Borough Code, or in the state?
That comes from state law.
Okay, so I can look at that.
But some of it, I mean, some of the confusion in Gettysburg is we also dealing with PennDOT right-of-way. And so forth there. So it's not all just borough right-of-way, and so it isn't quite so.
But it did come up again before with the side-up ordinance. Like, how is anybody entitled to rent the sidewalk to Garma, for example, for the antiques thing? So I'll look it up. Thanks.
Public comment.
Okay, seeing no additional, like, please, please do. Yeah, just help yourself.
I didn't want to let go of another meeting without speaking. Scott English, Gettysburg Academy, 6668 West High Street. And I would just like to reinforce what Ms. Nouse recommended. And I think it would be the best course of action, since there's limited business experience on the borough staff and the Borough Council. I mean that in a bad way, but I think let's bring in the expertise of the vast variety and different businesses in town, and treat them as partners in developing this ordinance, which is going to directly impact their livelihoods. That's all I'd like to say.
I'm Dave Pedders. I live at 13 Lincoln Square. I'm the owner of Cato LLC, which is the building at 2 Baltimore Street. Currently, C is Blue and Gray Bar and Grill, and I'm also speaking on their behalf. I also agree with Kelly's idea to postpone this a little bit. I, before Thanksgiving, I tried to stop down the borough to get a little bit clarification, to see where our business would be with compliance. And the staff is up in the air, not knowing the ordinance or how they would comply with it. And I wanted to see if I'm out of compliance or not. So I think it would be reasonable to postpone this for a little bit and have more input. Most importantly, I'd like to say, I really oppose the concept that Gettysburg Borough, through the sign ordinance, has authority to regulate the interior of any business. Illuminated signs are important for any business that chooses to use them. In the case of Blue and Gray Bar and Grill, what some may think as illuminated signs in our windows are actually artwork, or merchandise for sale. They all have prices on them. My understanding, if I read the ordinance, that would exclude those items from compliance. It's a twist, but when people get overbearing concepts of what an ordinance might be, they find ways to suit their own ends. I really feel this opposition, this ordinance is important for all businesses, and that's the only reason I'm speaking up. I'm normally a quiet guy. I try to do the right thing. But I really, this is really important to all businesses. And I fully expect to start or join legal options if this would be enacted. That's just where I see this going. I'd hate to waste my assets and the borough's assets to stop what I consider abusive powers to regulate the inside of my business and how I want to conduct it. But thank you for your time.
Public comment.
Hi, I'm Linda O'Tear. I'm here on behalf of Gallery 30 in the Upper Crust. Can you clarify the...
Can you give your address, please?
30 York Street, Gettysburg. Can you please clarify, I know with Shelley you were, is it a maximum of 50 square feet per property, period? Is that what you're proposing in this amended ordinance?
I don't usually do a lot of call-and-answer, but I believe if I reviewed the ordinance, I would have to look, but I believe it is by parcel.
I can't hear you, Wes, sorry.
I believe it is by parcel, yes.
50 square feet per property, period?
Yes.
Okay. So the Upper Crust is 64 feet, linear feet. To work with the current ordinance as written, it was quite costly for me to create a sign that would even fit in. So I have 64 linear feet. We had to find a way, cut letters and so forth, so that it would look proportional to the property. And that's just the frontage. Then I have Gallery 30, where I have, you know, more than 50 feet, linear feet across. I have more than 180 feet on my west wall. And then I have another 50-some feet on Racehorse Alley. So I just, I don't know where you came up with this 50 square feet per property, but I don't know the purpose of it, and it will hurt business. And I do ask you to put a decision off to at least next year where more of us can speak up. But can you just clarify why it is 50 square feet per property?
I'm not going to rehash discussions we already held publicly.
It just doesn't make sense.
You can check the take from September 2022. You can check it from June, or 2023, from June, July, and August to 2022. But that's really incumbent upon you to take those steps.
So the 50 square feet per property is what you're proposing in this ordinance?
That is what is in the draft, if you read the draft.
And your answer to Shelley also was her, that 50 square feet can be used anywhere on the property? It doesn't have to be a wall that's facing a public alley? Is that correct?
I do not see anything in the ordinance that requires you to place it on the side of the structure that faces a public street or alley, no.
It could go anywhere.
I believe so. I mean, I...
I don't think that, yeah, that is correct.
I mean, that includes all types of signage.
I think I read in your, in the red line of the ordinance that it had, the signage has to be facing a public alley in your proposed rewrite. Is that not the case?
You're welcome to think what you like. I'm not able to stand here, sit here, and go item by item on the ordinance. I just don't have the ability to do that. It wouldn't be appropriate to do it during public comment, it's your time to speak.
So at least the maximum is 50 square feet. And I would challenge you on that. I don't think it's appropriate at all for the properties downtown. It's not enough signage for the businesses to be viable. So I would ask you to just look at that again and consider the businesses. Thank you.
Public comment. Public comment. Public comment. Okay, seeing none.
Good evening, and welcome to this November 28th work session of the Borough Council, the Borough of Gettysburg. Announcements. An executive session of the Borough Council will be conducted immediately following the adjournment of this evening's Borough Council Work Session Meeting, consistent with Section 708A1, Section 708A3, and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act for the following purposes. One, to provide information and discuss matters involving the employment, the terms and conditions of employment, the salary and benefits of current and prospective in borough employees, and to discuss the investigation of complaints involving current borough employees with the borough's insurance, defense, and litigation legal counsel. Two, to discuss matters in connection with the possible purchase or lease of real property. And three, to review and discuss matters of borough business which, if conducted in public, could lead to the disclosure of information and matters of confidentiality protected by law. We will go to public comment. This is restricted to items that appear on the agenda. If you have not looked at the agenda, this includes bus parking, the, for the revised program for the spring, the 2024 fee resolution, and the Shade Tree Commission. So if you'd like to make public comment, please use the podium, give your name and address, and you have five minutes. Members of the Shade Tree Commission that are here, you'll be actively participating in that portion when we get there. You don't need to do it now if you don't want to, okay? All right, public comment. All right, seeing none. Mandrake Gable, the bus parking.
Member Lawson requested that the council revisit a potential revised bus parking pilot program for the spring. She had intended on joining us this evening, but she is unable to be here. So we can simply table this tonight and move on, and we can revisit this at a future meeting.
Okay, so we'll be looking at that in January of '24. Okay, that takes us to the 2024 fee resolution.
Yeah, before I turn it over to Manager Thistle, inadvertently, when we were talking about the fee resolution as it relates to the 2024 borough's budget, there was one item that was overlooked, and that is the convenience fee for the PayBy app through PayByPhone and parking. Currently, it is assessed at 35 cents per transaction. And PayByPhone, the vendor there, is asking for some relief there under that provision. So staff is proposing a 55 cent community fee. If you want to explain that a little bit further.
So yeah, that fee was set about three years ago. So they contacted us about two months ago, I believe, about the fee needing to raise it due to inflation purposes, they said. They are the merchant of record, so they're paying all the additional fees on it. As Charles said, the convenience fee right now is 35 cents for the customer. That would take it to 55 cents per the customer, unless you, the borough would want to absorb some of that themselves.
How does that function in manner of our arrangement with the vendor? Like, how is our contract set up? Is that that they absorb that? Do we have a term contract? How does this function?
We have a contract. Fees can change, because it's, I believe, a four-year contract, three-year, four-year contract. But it does state in there that the fees can change from time to time.
That they have the ability to change the fee from time to time. So essentially, for our purpose of our discussion here, the vendor has elected to raise their fee, and the discussion is whether or not the borough will pass that fee on to the user or absorb a portion of that fee.
Correct.
Okay.
So does everyone understand the nature of the discussion, then?
Because I would agree, some of the comments immediately were how steep that is. And I do know that inflation is quite horrific right now, so.
What do people think?
I think paying 55% on an hour's parking is, in fees, is pretty insane. And we've had private conversations that have led us to believe that this particular company may not belong for the world. So my guess is that their fee adjustment has nothing to do with inflation as much as it has to do with their own business practices. We can't absorb it, but nor should we be compelling the public to do so. I would... I would reiterate my request to Ms. Thistle that she be looking at other vendors.
Other thoughts?
I agree. I think 55 cents is ridiculous. You're going to have more in the fee than you have in the meter. You're only going to park for half an hour.
Well, the minimum downtown, I think, you know, just downtown, the minimum you can pay is an hour. Even if you only want to be there for 30 minutes, you're still paying for an hour.
Oh, okay.
And when we talked to them about trying to adjust that, the answer was no, because it's just too expensive to them to run their, their system. And then you add the fees on top of that. So whether you're pulling in for half an hour or for two hours, you're still going to pay the same fee. But if you're there for 30 minutes or 60 minutes, you're going to say, pay the same parking rate.
I mean, this takes me back to the conversations when PayBy app-only zones were established, and I think I was the lone no vote of the members that were on the council at that time. And this is one of the consequences of having zones in that way, that you really are at the mercy of whatever contractors are available. I know that parking meters have their expenses and the maintenance and everything else, but this is one of the outcomes of that decision.
With the old Passport vendor, they were 35 cents at the time. Now, that was seven, eight years ago when their fees were that. It was also 17 cents per transaction on top of that, and then another 3% on top of that. So I have checked into Park Mobile. They're 45 cents, and they are 14 cents, I believe, per transaction, and 3% on top. So they're all staying pretty comparable, all these apps.
I should have gone into the app business. I don't have a, other comments. I mean, we have to reach some sort of a solution here. I know that no one, it doesn't sound like anyone likes the options that are available, but I don't know what the other option is. If we have a contract that's signed for a term, we have two unfavorable potential outcomes.
Have we done any math to figure out what us eating that 20 cents would look like for a year's time, or over the life of the contract?
Do you have that number?
Not off the top of my head. We have that number, I just don't have it with me. But it would, it would-
Beneficial for this conversation to have a number.
It would, it would hurt the bottom line.
Well, certainly. I mean, the question, I think, is if we have any concept of how many transactions we have in a year.
Yep.
Right, that would really give you a sense, is this a $2,000 discussion, or a $20,000 discussion, or more?
I do have that number. I sent it to Charles. Um, let me see. I thought it was around the 500,000.
We could move on while we're looking for that, if that's interested in doing.
If it's half a million, that's 100 grand.
That was the dollar amount, not the transaction amount. That was what the dollar amount would have been for the transaction amount.
Okay. Okay, so what you're suggesting, Charles, is that we return to that. Give it a, give Ms. Thistle one minute. We can do that. All right.
Do you want me to go with 2022? How many transactions were in 2022?
Sure. That sounds great. No, 2022 is complete, so that would be fine.
Move on to Shade Tree and we'll come back to this.
We can circle back, yeah. It's going to take a few minutes, that's fine. All right, that takes us to our conversation with the Shade Tree Commission, and thank you for joining us. Marty is, Mr. Joel was very excited just now. You missed it. He, fist pumped. If I've ever seen anyone get so, well, Mr. Joel, you often do get very excited about plants. It's something to do with, like, your career interests or something like that. So, the purpose of this discussion this evening is to kind of get a bit of a start on a conversation with Shade Tree, how we operate the Shade Tree Commission, and how that functions with the council, and how that's going to work. So I would direct the members, and perhaps the, maybe verbally for the public's benefit, kind of provide some of the background of how the commission functions. One of the things that went on was that we had a very active commission for a period of time, and then we had almost no activity. And then we've kind of returned with a group now that's, that's going, and has been active. So, somebody want to give some background?
I'll start. Susan and Marty can both add. I was invited to be on the Shade Tree Commission, I think, in December 2018. And at that point, the Shade Tree Commission had not been active for a couple of years. Looking back, though, I inherited a bunch of old notes and so forth, tree plants and so forth. We've had, we've been fortunate, the borough's been fortunate to have some very good people serve on the committee. One that comes to mind is someone that just died a few weeks ago, Jane Scott.
Yep.
She led the commission for a number of years, and I think her passion for making the Gettysburger Borough, Gettysburg Greener Place has, there's a living legacy to that, really. So as you drive around the town, particularly downtown, there, you know, a lot, I think we're fortunate, we built a lot of nice trees, doing pretty well out there. And it's amazing how well some of them do it, because you look like they're growing up out of concrete sidewalks with, you know, two-by-two opening, and you wonder how the devil is going to do that? But they're, for the most part, hanging in there. The, when I came on, there, the borough was just wrestling with the fact that most of the Calgary, the Bradford pear trees that had been planted in large numbers in the downtown and in many other downtowns had died. And they died, Marty, what, they died of rust? Was it rust and? But anyway, they succumbed, and it was one of the lessons that was obvious already on us, don't plant a lot of the same thing. And so that's a lesson that we and a lot of other commissions took. So I joined the, I joined the borough, I think Susan was borough president, perhaps at that point, and she initiated getting it going again. And so I came on, Marty came on, and recently Susan has joined us also. So there are three of us. Rebecca Brown is the alternate. We served for a period of, I think our terms are three years, and we can serve up to two terms unless nobody else wants to serve, or something like that. But anyway, we, we kind of were getting up to speed when COVID hit, and then we had a year or two where we didn't do very much either. We had difficulty getting meetings, and we didn't want to initiate a lot of activity when we weren't not as all sure what the borough's finances were going to be looking like in the future. So we dropped off, I think we lost a year or two. Our planting, our planting methods and planting methods really amount to going around town and seeing where we might plant trees. Our mission really is to increase the green canopy in the town for all the benefits trees bring to a community. I think, listening to all of them, you can just imagine that they, they do provide a great aesthetic appeal to the, to the town. They soften all the dimensions of the town, and they provide oxygen, you know, lower temperatures, et cetera, et cetera. The focus of our recent years has been on the main arterial streets, as to say, Chambersburg, Carlisle, Baltimore, York. That's where almost all the plantings have, not quite all of them, but most of them have. And some of that was to replace, I think there were 17 places, empty spots on York Street when I came on the commission. And those were from, mostly from the Bradford pears that had died. So we, kind of the first thing we did was pick some varieties for those places, and then look elsewhere for other opportunities to improve the tree scape of the borough. An issue we ran in right from the start is sidewalks, and how to handle sidewalks that are where the trees are lifting up the sidewalks and causing, on safe patches. And that is still an issue that is unresolved. We don't have answers yet, and we don't have a clear strategy in our mind. We have been working with a homeowner, homeowner over on Stevens Street, who has a sidewalk, 60 East Stevens has a sidewalk in front of their house that clearly is a public hazard. They don't want the liability of that. They came to the tree commission and said, well, what can you do in terms of addressing the situation? And that was at our most recent meeting. And we asked them to be patient, that we would like to explore alternatives to simply cutting down the tree and having, in situations like that, the borough has, during my time in the commission, and I think it's precedent, it's well-established, the borough pays for taking down the tree, which can cost anywhere from 500 to $3,000, in my experience. But the homeowner is responsible for repairing the sidewalk. I'm not aware of any incident where the borough itself, through the tree commission, has put in any funds to do sidewalk repair for the homeowners. It's a, it's a subject that has been under discussion, I think, by, by the borough.
Yeah, and that's kind of an interesting intersection we will deal with here a bit, because we have a Shade Tree Commission and the ordinance that authorizes that, but then we have a separate sidewalk ordinance, which is also currently under revision. And one of the things that this council will continue to discuss into '24 will be the concept, one of the proposals we have in that is specifically dealing with situations where shade trees have caused that damage, that the borough would accept some responsibility for that. Because those gentlemen over there, when they contacted me, I tell you, well, the first thing I told them, I said, well, you have to keep Murphy in mind here. No matter what I tell you, keep Murphy's Law in mind. If I tell you to go ahead and replace your sidewalk come next spring, the borough will decide that they will pay to replace your sidewalk, and you've already done it, and you'll be out that money. And if I tell you not to replace your sidewalk, someone's going to fall on your sidewalk tomorrow. And it's just a very unfortunate situation. And, and I think it does highlight one of the hazards, right, of doing this. But that's something that's just part of kind of the, the situation. There are certain steps that I know that, you know, are taken with the way they're installed and the species chosen to try to mitigate that as best as possible. But I think that's something that everyone just has to be aware, we'll, we'll be dealing with in perpetuity.
Yeah, it is definitely a big issue. Although, to be honest, it isn't, maybe it's quite as big an issue as I had imagined it is, because I just have been spreading out over the north side of town, looking for incidents of, right now, that would need to be repaired. So far, I've only spotted two north of, north of town. So I had imagined if when we went looking, we would find scores. It might not be that bad, so I'm hoping that that's the case. And we have asked the residents of 60 East Stevens Street to work with us in terms of exploring some alternative solutions to just cutting down the tree. We are getting in an arborist to advise us whether the tree can be root pruned. Root pruning is, long-term, it can obviously have an ill effect on the tree, but if you get an extra 10 or 15 years out of a nice big tree, by virtue of root pruning, that might be a worthwhile technique. But you also have to be aware of the safety factors. If you prune a, really a stabilizing root, you incur more risk because of that. We don't know the answers to all those questions. We're going to get an arborist advising us, and then we're going to have a contractor look at, in this case, ramping up and ramping down over, over the trees. And Susan has just done that sort of thing at her house, and I think that she is still a good quality. But that's, that's, that's a solution that we're working. Presently, the precedent is that the borough doesn't pay for that sort of thing. We put in, in our budget request, $5,000 for kind of a pilot program to explore that thing. With the borough's blessing, we could do some further exploration. The other thing that I will add in terms of the workings of the commission is, how do we decide where to put trees? What do we do to contact the public in advance of that and so forth? We, we go around looking for spots, missing trees, trees have been broken, hit by traffic. We've had a few of those, so forth. Trees have died. Those are some of the obvious ones. Beyond that, we're hoping to extend the canopy somewhat to places that used to have trees, but happened in recent years. For instance, Christ Lutheran, it was a place that used to have a, a couple of trees in front of it. Tree trees, not, not just the ashes that they had in front of the church. And we were interested in putting a second tree in there to go with the locusts that was already there. So we look for places, and then we decide among ourselves which of those places are kind of ranked at the top of how much money we think we're going to spend. And then we choose what varieties to put in. Now, missing and all that is any kind of conversation with the public or the property owners. And I'm not certain that that is mandated in any, in our, in our, what we're supposed to be doing or required to be doing. The trees that we're planting, as I understand it, are on Borough property, in that the property lines, you know, stop well short of those people's sidewalks. They stop, they stop well short of people's curbs. They don't-
Yeah, I think what you're referring to is the right-of-way. So, and this is something that has come up, and this is where I've been getting input from different people, and sometimes it wasn't always clear why, and then it became clear why. So for instance, because their propylene does go to the curb, but then the borough has use of the right-of-way. And I think it comes down to, maybe not what's in an ordinance and what's required in that way, but what's appropriate. And if we have to, you know, the council has to redraft, the ordinance are amended to require this, perhaps they should consider that. But I mean, Chad Allen Carr is not here this evening, but in late September, he started bringing this topic up, and I, I couldn't figure out why. I thought, okay, well, this is fine, we'll, we'll talk about that. This would be an appropriate thing to start off '24 with, right? Start talking about shade trees. And then I called Susan on September 30th. And I'm like, okay, let's get this conversation set for this evening in November. And then on October 18th, I found out that the sidewalk in front of Chad's building had been cut and a tree had been put in. I was like, oh, now I understand why this topic was coming up. I wish that I had known that from any of the parties involved that this is why this is coming up. Similarly, the pastor from the church, Christ Lutheran, was here and wanted us to increase the sidewalk damage fine to $75,000. And my first thought was, what has someone done that this is coming up? Why is this happening?
I'm sorry, what was the 75,000?
He wanted us to, anytime, it's an ordinance that deals with the sidewalk, the sidewalk ordinance itself, there's a provision within it that deals with anytime the sidewalk is cut or damaged with a contractor or otherwise. And he had specific language revisions that he wanted, some of which were not prudent, because you might not want, he wanted, for instance, the sidewalk returned to its original condition. That might not be in the property owner's best interest, because the original condition might not be all that great. But then there was another thing where he wanted to increase the fine to 75,000, and we can't do that. We don't have the legal authority to do that. And I just thought, why is this happening? And then I understood that, okay, there's a discussion about putting a tree in front, and this is why this is happening. Originally, I went, I'm looking at the property, I'm looking up and down Chambersburg Street, and I could see where at some point, I think Columbia Gas was allowed to cut like that whole block and then replace it with like a one or one-and-a-half-foot strip of concrete. And I thought, oh, that's what this is about. But then it became clear, oh, no, there's a concern about a tree. So I mean, I'll let others speak to that topic. I know that Mr. Carr's sentiment is that he would want property owners to be consulted, and I'm inclined to agree.
I'm inclined to agree also, frankly.
You know, I, I think that's part of the, you can't have buy-in if they're not part of it.
Right, make sure good communications. It will, it will obviously slow down the methods that we have used in the past, but I, you know, I think that's okay. So I always think that in the future, we- So I always think that in the future, we, we would want to go out and look for sites. At that point, start a communication with the property owners. And then, once we get mutual agreement. The question that the borough may want to consider is, do, are you going, will you require the mutual agreement of the property owner?
And I think that's a good topic of discussion.
I would advise you not to do that. I think that the, the larger good will, can be encouraged by having a certain proprietary move interest in, in planting trees. And not everyone shares, shares the enthusiasm for the trees that the members of the tree commission do, and perhaps we go at it too aggressively. But if, if you require permission from the property owner, I think that, there, there will still be plenty of places to plant trees, but we wouldn't be able to plant all the trees that we would hope to plant in the future.
And I want to give an opportunity here to allow the other members to, to add anything they may want you to consider and prepare for. I won't be setting the agenda for January of twenty-four, but I would imagine sometime in that season, the winter or spring season of twenty-four, this conversation would continue. It, it does remind me of some discussions we dealt with probably several years ago when the sidewalk ordinance revisions began. There are areas, my block of Stratton Street is a good example, where the planning strip situation is completely inconsistent. There are some, there's others that are missing. And yeah, if you just allow people to kind of remove and add, it's, it's not, you know, really the best aesthetic. But I think what I'd ask the members to, to pose the planning, or pardon me, to the shade tree commission, if there are items that you want to have kind of specifically be able to address when you start to have these discussions in more detail, what those items may be. This kind of began with the concept that we should develop a one or, I think it's a two-page document that you have, is fine, but something that can be provided to the council, but also the public in brief of how it works, because we really lacked that. And, and asking someone to go read an ordinance just isn't really the easiest thing to do. Although sometimes, you know, as we saw with signs, it's, it's kind of the only way, because of the amount of detail. But this involves buy-in in, in the trees, and it just seemed like the appropriate method. So are there items that, that members would like the shade tree commission to be prepared to discuss?
Yeah, I, I mean, certainly, you know, communicating with property owners, it may not be mandated as of yet, but I mean, I think it could be considered a best practice, right? And I think there can be situations where we have to use our judgment here. And it's not just, you know, does the borough have the right or not? So for example, in the, in the case of Christ Lutheran, you know, they just, two years ago, wanted to do the right thing and put in a safer sidewalk. Their, their sidewalks were in terrible condition. And so they did a fundraiser, and their membership, I think they paid a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for that sidewalk. And to only get two years before somebody comes and cuts it, I, I think they had a valid concern there. Like, who's going to compensate us? Because that's a, that's a sincere question.
Mr. Moon, if I might ask, what do you, what compensation? The borough's intention was to put another tree well similar to what they already had, plant another locust similar to what they already had. I don't think, in my opinion, it would not have done any damage, it would have enhanced the property.
Oh, I, I, I don't disagree. I like trees quite a bit. But I think they have a valid financial consent, concern here. And the same, I think, can be said for, for, you know, residential property owners, too. You know, I mean, the planting strip in front of my house is only eighteen inches wide. If, if the commission decided you were putting a tree there, like, that's great. But from the property owner's point of view, that's a time bomb. Because I know in twenty years, that sidewalk is going to fail. And because we're having this discussion now about the sidewalk ordinance and what the costs of construction materials are, we know that replacing a single square of sidewalk can be five to seven thousand dollars. If a tree buckles two, then we have created a significant financial burden on a property owner, where the intent was to put in a nice tree. So we, we have to be cognizant of that. And I'd be cautious about the concept of ramping over existing root structures, just to keep in mind that our goal has to always be increased accessibility and increased compliance with ADA guidelines. And what is a ramp and what is a slope have very specific legal definitions, and we need to make sure we're not creating impediments where we're trying to remediate impediments. So I would suggest that in situations where that ramping were pursued, that it would need to have a proper consultation with somebody well-versed in those ADA guidelines.
I think we all definitely concur with that.
I have a question.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
If with the, the concrete and the tree and the trip, who's liable if somebody trips on the pavement in front of a homeowner's house? Is it the borough or the homeowner?
The homeowner. The homeowner, but they're gonna, they're gonna sue the borough.
And that is.
We're almost always, I don't think I'm disclosing very much, that we're almost always a secondary named in some sort of trip and fall lawsuit. At pretty much all times.
That's my experience. I was just deposed by a lawyer in a suit against a, a property owner on West Lincoln. And as chairman of the tree commission, I was deposed, even though my term hadn't started until actually the incident had happened, previous to my come. But the borough, as you suggest, was a secondary policy, a secondary party.
And we were eventually removed from that. But, but yeah, it was a situation where someone, and this happens with too many ordinances, people try to assert that, oh, well, someone told me I could do that. And in that particular situation, it was interesting, because the people they named were all deceased. So that's how they attempted to circumnavigate that. People get very creative.
I have not suggestions, but a couple of comments. Coincidentally, we're discussing signs this evening and trees this evening. And years ago, Harry and John and Susan may remember, the signs in the tree wells were a real littering problem all over town, particularly at election time. They were left in the tree wells, these campaign signs. So I got in the car this afternoon, drove around looking at generally signs, but found two signs in tree wells. That is something else that, that we have to consider, the random location of signs. Do those signs pertain to the property owner adjacent, adjacent to that tree well or not? So just coincidentally, both of those topics were at the forefront of our thoughts this evening.
Well, and this also is something, so when we're, we had a discussion here, perhaps September, about the construction that'll occur on Washington Street with the inner loop. And there would be trees planted in that location, and it would be best to loop in the shade tree commission, looking at the design of the, really the units, I don't know a better term for it, but basically the structures that the trees would be planted within. You know, I, I trust in Mr. Clayball's capabilities, but at the same time, it would be helpful to have everyone looped in that would be party to that, so that we get the best possible product for all purposes. You know, I, certainly there are trade-offs, but we don't want to plant trees that are, that are going to die, because they don't have enough soil or enough square footage to, to survive. So.
I would say the downtown area would be different than like a residential area. Several years ago, the gas company ripped up our sidewalks on Seminary Avenue, which is residential. And I think this was at the time Shade Tree Commission wasn't in operation. And we had these big trees before, but they were cut down. So the gas company came in and said, we can replace the trees. And the neighbors had buy-in. So we even got to choose what type of tree. And a neighbor next door, we said, let's go with ornamental cherry blossom, whatever. And there were a couple neighbors that did not want a tree. Couple old elderly folks that said, we don't want leaves, we don't want to deal with stuff. And I respect, you know, and I said, well, that's their property. So I think if you take a poll with people living in residential areas, they would consider to the curb their property and absolutely think that they should have, you know, a say in whether they should plant a tree and what type of tree it could be. Now, your expertise then would come in and say, here's the type of tree that doesn't raise the sidewalks. I mean, you did a wonderful job on West Broadway, the island. So I know, like, I would come to you and ask for things, and I respect what you do. But I wouldn't want the commission to come in without talking to me and plant a tree there. I would be rather, you know, furious, to be quite honest with you. So I think what I'm saying is, I see your role as working with property owners. And I think there's a difference between downtown and, you know, more residential areas. So there's some things that you could do.
In many areas, many of our kind of outlined residential areas, there, there are actually not very many street trees because of, you know, there's a sidewalk, not, there's not a real planning strip, and people often have lawns in which their major trees will be planted. And so you don't have the need for street trees that we have in the center of town and so forth. I would point out that in addition to Seminary Avenue, their West Street was redone with participation of its, of its residents along there. They, that project, which was not a tree commission project per se, the residents picked out the trees they wanted on that.
But what would you say to the, the resident that says, I don't want a tree? Would you respect their desire not to have a tree?
That was what we did in the case of Christ Lutheran.
Okay.
And yeah, I, I, I think I, I would. There were some visions of opinion about that.
Sure.
Whether, whether someone should, you know, block, what is a public good in the eyes of the tree commission?
Right.
And my, my lead-in would say, yeah, let's not, let's not force anything down anybody's throat.
When you talk about West Street, are you talking about the second block between the gas station and the CenturyLink building?
I guess, I'm sorry, it was South Street, wasn't it?
Oh, South Street.
South Street.
Oh, we, yeah, the, yeah.
I was saying, West Street is actually, is a really good example of a place we probably shouldn't be doing trees, because those tree wells make those sidewalks completely impassable for somebody using a wheelchair. It's just, they're just, they're unusable, just like that block of Washington in front of Ice House is unusable by some mobility device.
We, we're, of course, very conscious of ADA requirements, and our understanding as best is that those have five feet, but you can have four feet for a limited amount of space. And so, right before you just have to.
It, it's four feet, and then in five feet, you have to have it every one hundred and fifty feet, maybe?
Yeah.
I don't have Ms. Marshall here anymore. She would know. It's either a hundred and a hundred and fifty feet, you have to have the five feet. Yeah.
Because I lived there. I don't know. I just walked out on Breckenridge Street, and there were trees there. Where did they come from? I don't know if that's a shade tree commission.
I think it was.
We did, we did plant some flowering trees along Breckenridge Street on the south side. Because they're, they have a pretty healthy grass strip in that area. So we did plant trees there.
Small trees.
Yeah, they're small trees.
I, I just wanted to ask, because I just, I was like, I think it's a nice idea, but I was like, where did these trees come from? And who put them here? And did the property owners agree?
Well, to tell you the truth, it took some discussion for, for the one property owner. But she, in the end, was very, very amenable to having those trees planted. And we, we talked to her about the type of trees and so forth. So they're all flowering along there, and so we hope they do well and they'll really help that section of Breckenridge, because there's space there. So one of our real challenges is that we have narrow sidewalks in a lot of places. We have low utility lines. We have gas lines and water lines. And so it's really difficult to really site a tree, and we have to be very careful about the type of tree because of space issues and height issues. And so.
And I echo that from Susan. They're mostly small trees. And we also put in, or, wait, the borough, because it's the borough, the Public Works Department, who we're very grateful for, I wish we had that up here. But they also put in tree root barrier, it extends down eighteen inches below the surface to prevent root growth down beneath instead of more superficial, which would lift the sidewalks. So we are doing that currently. That is a standard practice issue. Root barrier, root growth down instead of underneath sidewalks.
Yeah, and I would have to agree with David, that I think the prevalence of those problems is not nearly as much as we think. It's the severity that captures people's attention.
Yeah.
You know, and I think it's very fair to state that the trees, for instance, there on Stevens Street, and the ones that were on West Lincoln that were involved, I believe that they all predated us having a shade tree commission. These were trees that are, these are old trees. This wasn't something that resulted from the types of trees that we are generally planting. These are trees that were there long before we had a commission here in the borough.
I would, I think there are some issues currently on Baltimore Street. The commission has been kind of staying away from Baltimore Street because of the, of the possibility of that project in the future. We haven't, haven't, we had, we've stuck a few trees in where some have died, but we haven't undertaken anything significant along that. And we would like to draw to the borough's attention the fact that the present plans, as Marty has seen them, don't, don't really have as many trees as we would like to see.
Understood. Yeah, I think, how many years ago it's been since we sat in this room and looked at those plans? Because we're just waiting on grant dollars again and again. And that's the thing, when we discuss things at length, and they were discussed in incredible length on that project, then there's often a substantial delay, not unlike the sign ordinance situation, because of all the legal ramifications of Reed and Gilbert. There's a substantial delay, and that causes confusion, even when there was substantial public input. Are there any other questions people would like to have?
Just, you may or may not be aware, or sometimes you get a little tunnel vision, I worked with Jane Scott for many, many years with Shade Tree Commission. And when you get out in residential areas, I'd just remind you that generally, not always, but generally, from the face of curb back ten feet is our right-of-way. So if there's a very narrow grass strip and only a three-foot sidewalk, which is common in a lot of the residential areas, you should have five, six feet behind that sidewalk. And we have planted trees on the backside of sidewalks in those residential areas. As long as it's in the right-of-way, our highway department should have no problems with that. If they want it in the backyard, that's a whole other story. And, and we don't do that. The other thing is, we seem to have, since the program started, and I was with that when it started, and my, all my years of working with Jane Scott and them, we've somehow branched out that we have taken responsibility for the whole tree. And I don't know that that's the way it was intended or the way it should be, but.
It is in the ordinance that the borough is responsible for maintaining it.
The whole thing?
That's the way I read it. In fact, it says that the property owner can't really touch the tree without a permit.
No, that's not the way it used to be, but okay.
Yeah.
But nevertheless, keep in mind that guys in the highway department do a hell of a job. And I'll be the first one to go to bat for them every time. But they're not tree people. I mean, I trim a lot of my own trees. My wife has a different opinion of what I call trimming and what she calls hacking. I trim with a chainsaw a lot of times. Not actually pruning, as you would say. But they do a good job for the training they've had. They've had some training, but they're not arborists. Some people get upset with them. But most of the time when they're trimming, they're trimming for clearances, for sidewalk and the height over the street. They're not shaping the tree or making it look pretty, so to speak. But I agree that we need to get a, if you go over two pages, nobody's going to read it. But we need to come up with something that you or Robbie can go out and hand to people that, you know, they understand exactly what's going on and how it's going to be done.
Give credit where credit is due, Susan has been proactive in communicating with people, including information about the tree that's planted and asking for people to watch over. She's been good about that. In some cases, it's been, I don't know, maybe, in some cases, you just hang it on the door.
Yeah, I, I. Yeah, I, I have, and that's after the fact, after we plant it. I provide them with information about that tree that we planted, ask them to help, help us to keep it watered for the first couple of years. And that's been very well received. There have been some places I've just had to drop it off. I couldn't, you know, reach anybody at the house, but I'd usually just knock on doors or go into the business and share that information. So, because we, we thought it was important. We want the community to be part of, of this whole, you know, idea of creating the shade, the beauty, the coolness in the summer. As a community, we need that to happen. And we're losing some of the very old trees that have been planted decades and decades ago, and they're not being replaced in many cases. So, you know, we're trying to kind of make the public aware of, of how important that is for a community. And John, I, your comments are very interesting, because I, we, we had a boundary issue in our neighborhood, and they, surveyors put a pin in the corner, and that pin is one to two feet behind the sidewalk. So I, I'm figuring that's my, that's my corner.
Where, where the pin is, is your corner.
Yeah.
Not all streets in the Borough are in the center of the street right of way. As crazy as that sounds, you know, I, I worked for the Borough in the streets for 30 years, and McMillan Street, the street I live in, is not in the center of the 50-foot road right of way.
I, I have gone on the Borough's website and I've been looking for the exact details on the right of way or property, and I haven't found it yet.
No, and there are some...
It, it can be challenging, because it's different in different areas, right? If you're on a state road, there's different rights of way than if you're on a...
I'm interested in your comment, you, that you did plant out trees beyond the...
Yeah.
I suspected we certainly had the orders to do so.
Jane Scott was very persuasive, not just of the property owners, but she bent my ear on a lot of things. Not to say that she got her way, but, I mean, it was, her arguments were usually just common sense. And, you know, one of her arguments was, well, if we can plant in right of way, why can't we plant in the right of way behind the sidewalk as well as the one in front? Made sense to me, so we did it. As long as it was in the right of way, I didn't have a problem with that. And I don't think Robbie would either. I mean, he's not here to speak for himself, but I don't think he would. But, I mean, it, it's, there, there are some odd lines when you get into property lines in this town, just because of the age of the town and how it was laid out. One that always cracks me up is if you go down Franklin Street, between West Middle and High Street, and you look at the west curb line, you will see one property where the curb line is seven and a half inches back. Rest of the curb line's straight, and all of a sudden, it's one property that sits back. And that's property line issue. And when Mr. Weinbrunner was alive and laid out the street, they got into a big hassle about the property line. So when he laid out the street, he just moved the curb back and said, there you go.
In the, in the availability here, some exchange of information with the Borough Council, I would propose that perhaps the tree commission this winter can perhaps give you a proposed best practices sheet, and also precedence what we have done in the past and what we think perhaps should best be done in the future. That would be for your consideration. And we'd also outline some of the question marks, the issues that we're facing right now. What if, what if a property owner doesn't go along with our vision, et cetera, and so forth, to allow those policy choices to be made by the Borough Council?
I think that'd be very appropriate. The Council will organize in the beginning of January, and then they will set out how they're going to conduct their business. And so I would expect that they'll be in contact with you shortly after that to determine when this discussion will continue.
I think we're very appreciative of the planning department's initiation of a mapping of the trees. I think that, that will be extremely helpful for us as a commission, and I think for the Borough going forward. We're keeping pretty good track of what we're planting, so we can continue that into the future. The other thing we'd like to do is update our, the Shade Tree Ordinance, so we'll have recommendations about that. We've already started to work on the tree list, because we know it's very outdated.
Yeah.
So we've been consulting with other communities, and we, we've put together, I think, we're getting close to a final list that we can have the council adopt then. But I would ask that the council, as you're looking at the sidewalk ordinance, which is kind of part and parcel of what we do, is that you, you think about the trees in crafting that sidewalk issue, because it can make a difference in, in whether you can plant or not plant.
Well, that's an interesting point, too. We recently were having a discussion about the plans for the interloop expansion on Washington Street, and the engineer asked us how we felt about, you know, the metal grates that often are built into tree wells, so that the tree well itself doesn't lose that sort of walkable surface. I think most of us were inclined to agree that those would be a worthwhile investment. Do you three have opinions on those and their utilization?
The grates?
The grate, the grates are mixed, held in mixed regard by tree commissions. The problem is, is they often get lifted by the roofs and kind of amplify the issue of safety somewhat.
Yeah, the engineer had, sorry to interrupt, but the engineer had showed us an interesting design where it's sort of built in concentric circles, so over time, you can cut out the center rings as you need to as the tree expands.
You know, that's a great idea. I hadn't seen that myself, but it sounds like a good idea.
Because I think Public Works has had to cut some of our grates, because the trees are getting too big, so...
But theoretically, they should add, I, I don't, I don't know this, it would be nice if they added to the ADA surface.
Yeah.
So that you could have three and a half feet plus a half foot of grate. I don't know whether that's the case or not.
Yeah, I, I like them, because I think that they are a way that we can incorporate a greener streetscape, but not lose, you know, the full, you know, nine square feet of, of walkable space.
And they do keep the weeds down, which is another thing. If you ever get to Chambersburg, Chambersburg has been putting in a product around their trees that you can also walk over, or a wheelchair can go over. And so we, we've talked about that with the Shade Tree Commission experimenting with, with that product. It's actually poured, but it's porous. So that's one thing to think about.
Interesting. All right, so, Council, look forward to seeing you in the new year.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Appreciate it. All right, we can return then. Do we have a number of transactions?
I do. In 2022, it was 135,826. In looking at my reports each month, you can see that the cash has been going down, the transactions for pay-by-phone have been going up. So right now, year-to-date, we have 198,054.
Transactions?
Transactions. So that would put us, if, at the 20 cents...
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand.
Forty grand, yeah.
I mean, we, we still have another probably 20,000 transactions in December yet, but...
So we either are looking at a $50,000 projected budget adjustment, or we pass that on to the consumer in the fee resolution.
What do you think?
And just to remind everybody, you can still pay cash at every meter. This is not, you're not forced...
Every meter.
Yes, every meter.
Not every space.
Correct, every meter.
There are app-only locations.
Correct, there's one location that's app-only.
That's not the only reason I oppose that. I, I still think that it was just, well, a lot of our parking community might not be so apt to use such things, but that was a separate issue. What do folks want to do? Not taking a stance isn't going to be an option on this one. I... I mean, I wouldn't say that you absolutely had to make a budget adjustment. You...
I, I wouldn't think we need to make a budget adjustment.
I would tell you that...
Just know that it's, if you do not pass it on to the end user...
Just know that you're...
It will affect the bottom line.
You're probably eating 40 or 50 grand.
In a $1.2 million budget for parking, $40,000 is fairly de minimis.
Right. That, I mean, I was leaning on the fact that I, I always feel that you underestimate. But, but it is something you don't want to just dismiss, right?
Well, right, and it's 20 cents right now, but...
Doesn't matter. Whether it's a budget adjustment or not, it's...
There's nothing stopping them from increasing it twice next year.
Yeah, no, and that does, I mean, I have noticed significantly, um, in a lot of businesses, you know, you often, especially the smaller local businesses, you try to pay in cash to be polite, right? Because you know they're eating it, but a lot of people anymore, they're not doing that anymore. It's just right out front that, like, hey, this is going to be 70%, and that's just the way it is. And I can understand that. Because of the situation with, as we see in the app, so many more people are paying with some sort of credit card or, or something of that nature, and there's a cost to that.
And like I said, they are the merchant at record. So if we had to go with someone else that isn't our merchant at record, then we're having to pay somebody else additional fees on top of the fees that we're already paying.
Right, and what I gather is, no matter who the vendor is, this is going to get worse. That's what I gather from the whole situation.
And it has been three years, so they have, it's not like they come every year and request more. I think it would just, it's been, it's been coming.
Well...
Looking for a motion?
Well, there's not, it's not a meeting motion, but he needs to know what to put on the agenda, or what to put in the fee resolution. As it sits there, it's the 55 cents. You know, there are a lot of things in my life right now that are irritating me when I go to just about anywhere to purchase something, because of the increases. But I don't think it's appropriate to saddle that with the general public and the taxpayer. It's the person that's consuming the service.
Yeah.
Because there are certainly things that I've chosen not to consume because of what has happened in this country. So I hate to say it, because we want people to park here, but I don't think I can ask the, the taxpayers to carry that 40 or 50,000 dollars because of this unfortunate situation, and, and it is going to get worse.
Yep.
What do you think?
I agree.
I don't think we should pass it on.
Okay, you think the Borough should absorb it?
Well, I don't think that either, but I think at this point in time, that's the prudent thing to do.
Okay.
I just don't think that, I'm like you, I mean, I look at things and, I looked at some things for my wife this afternoon, and she didn't get them.
So you're using, like, the same logic, but in the opposite direction?
Yeah.
Okay. Butterfield?
Prudent is my middle name.
So you would agree to leave it at, say, 35 cents where it is now? Mr. Berger?
You know, it's tough. I, I find places to park as a taxpayer where I can walk places. But at the same time, I don't think, I, I feel comfortable passing it on to the consumer.
Okay.
I think we should absorb it this year, and then look the next year, see how we, where we go.
So what you said confused me a bit. Which option are you choosing? 35 cent fee to the consumer for 55 cent?
Status quo is 35 cents.
Yeah, the way you phrased it confused me. It seemed like you were talking about...
Oh, yeah, yeah, status quo, yeah.
35 cents. Okay, so let's put 35 cents in. When we address that at the December meeting, when we vote on that, with, hopefully Mr. Carr and Ms. Lawson will be here for that session, we could always make an adjustment to that fee resolution by motion. That can be done, if it's desired, okay? So we can have input from all seven. Okay? All right. I believe my computer shut off here, but I believe that takes us to public comment.
It does.
So I would invite anyone that has public comment to go to the podium. Five minutes, your name and address. Thank you.
Shelley Nance, 28 Chambersburg Street. Since the Shade Tree Commission was here tonight, I would, again, like to state I would like to see the sign ordinance be tabled or go into next year, because this is a big concern, I think, again, for businesses in the downtown, which is a separate area from residential. Like I said earlier, a tree obscures a lot of my visibility on the facade of my building. So when you're talking about limiting us to 50 square feet on one building, you know, I have a tree that blocks a large portion of my facade during the summertime, when it's in full leaf. So when you're talking about advertising for your business, having the sign ordinance have flexibility in it is going to be very important if you want to continue to have trees downtown and also businesses downtown. I also know in the sign ordinance, they are increasing the space between mobile devices like sign boards from four feet to five feet, for ADA compliance, I'm sure. But again, I went measured, there's a tree, I have a granite threshold to the private entrance of my building, and there's not five feet. So I think you could gain the five feet if you have a well, one of the metal wells over the tree bed. But again, there's like a lot of issues in the first block of the downtown with the trees, with the visibility for the buildings, which would go back to another reason, to sort of give some time with the sign ordinance, to look at all of those particulars, which are more driven business-to-business, and where the trees are located, and where the trees are going to go, because those are all sort of like moving parts altogether. So that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Public comment?
Scott English, 6668 West High Street, Gaysburg Academy. On the parking problem, why not just leave the fee at 35 cents? Make up the difference by charging those that can't remember how much money they put in a meter or paid on their app, the penalty fee, jack that up to cover the cost, the shortfall. I don't know what the fine is for getting a parking ticket right now, 30 bucks, 40 bucks? Jack it up. Make people pay up they can't remember how much times in a meter to cover the shortfall for the vendor. I want to thank the Shade Tree Commission. It's a noble job that you all do as far as trying to keep urban trees growing in a, a very, you know, an old town that has a lot of old streets and not many places to plant trees. When's the best time to plant a tree? 20 years ago. When's the second best time? Today. There's a lot of things you have to think about, the critical root zone. Urban trees are very tricky. And NRCS and the Forest Service have done many studies. You can look there for guidance on which species, species specifics. Once you have to worry about with pathogens and disease and other issues, you have to consider, is the Borough getting stormwater credits for the trees that we plant through the Shade Tree Commission, or are those being calculated to offset the MS4 requirements that the Borough has to meet? I don't know what your mandate is, but I think it's imperative that you contact the property owners and get their permission and coordinate with them to get buy-in to planting trees in the Borough. That's imperative. To come out and tell people that you're going to force them to accept a tree on their property, that's not, that's not right. We can, GMA can contact us about drought situations and reduced water. Why can't we use GMA's phone tree to contact all the residents and property owners in the Borough and say, hey, do you want a tree on your property? We'll come plant it for free. Let's do it that way. But property owners like Christ Lutheran Church shouldn't have to come and beg the Shade Tree Commission for permission to deny them a tree. That's ridiculous. That's all I have to say.
Public comment?
Well, I understand we can comment on tabled issues as well.
Anything at this point?
I'm here to comment on the rezoning process that's taking place in the Borough. It's still in the process, correct? Um, I just would really like to know what the purpose of the rezoning was when they decided to remove South Washington Street from the blocks from Chambersburg to West High, and the first blocks of West Middle Street and West High from Baltimore. From old town zoning to a proposed moderate-density zoning, what is the purpose? We already allow multiple-unit apartments and dwellings... We already allow multiple-unit apartments and dwellings above businesses. So why is... Why? Does anyone know what the purpose would be for removing the old-town zoning? Deleting part of the old-town zoning from what the old map was? What is the purpose?
I think you're... What the question you're asking is going to be most appropriately posed to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is going to be the most appropriate body to address your question.
Okay.
They're much better prepared to discuss that. We're in the process, and that whole ordinance will come to the council, but it'll come with an explanation from the Planning Commission and the planning staff. And I did forget to get your name and address.
Suzanne Castille, 131 South Washington Street.
Thank you.
I just see this as detrimental to the community simply because, one thing, geographically, that section of town is only a block from the courthouse, a couple blocks from the town square. Right now, we have a great mixture of professional offices, residential living, small businesses and things like that, you know, home-owned businesses. Why would you want to destroy that?
Mr. Heiser is correct that the Planning Commission would be better to speak to us, but I'll speak on this just because I am on the committee that is working on this zoning rewrite. Those lines are still being figured out. And we are trying to be fairly meticulous in going parcel by parcel to make sure that existing uses are preserved. There are certain zones... We're trying to reduce the number of zones, but we still have to keep the zones and the uses contiguous. So we couldn't say, you know, change a neighborhood but keep one parcel the same. Like, everything has to be... Like, they all have to be the same zone. So you can't have just one parcel zoned one way and then, you know, everything around is zoned differently. So in trying to balance the existing uses while reducing the number of zones and the very confusing overlays and all that, we've had... I don't know if you were able to attend the town hall we did on that. We really have been trying to get as much input as we can. But specifically, the purpose is to make our zoning ordinance easier for all of us to understand. And so in redrawing those zones, you shouldn't expect to see a change in uses for your parcel, but there may be like things, you know, you might want to do in the future that the rules, you know, may or may not be there. Like, if you wanted to buy an apartment building and turn it all into Airbnbs, you know, that may or may not be allowed based on where you live in these zones. So we're trying to be meticulous, but that is the purpose.
Well, I just hope that it's fair to people who already have invested money...
Absolutely.
Into buying a property that they're understanding is, okay, I have these options for my property.
Yep.
And not rezoning it to a zoning that takes away those options.
Right. So it's very key to remember is that nothing we do is going to take away your existing uses.
But what about other options for the property?
Right, so it's going to affect, you know, the next person who buys the property from you.
Which means you're going to have trouble selling it then. Because if you cannot sell it for its present usage, you're going to take a beating if you try to sell it.
So, yeah, I think I need to curb this off a bit. The conversation you need to have, and I remember we spoke at the town hall, the conversation you need to have is with the Planning Commission. I would tell you that I did follow up on our conversation specifically with Ms. Marshall. And I do believe they made changes even from that draft they had that evening to your block because they observed the same things that you were observing. But I don't have nearly the pulse on exactly where they are at because that whole discussion continues, and it really won't come back to the council for a while. It was there... I attended the town hall, but it's really something the commission handles until it comes to the legislation portion where they actually bring it to the council.
The proposed future map, though, is, as it stands right now on the website, is up to date as to what's being proposed currently. So you can go to our website, and you can look at the zoning map proposal. And it's a sliding map, so you can kind of slide your finger back and forth across it or your mouse, and you can see it, you know, how your parcel falls currently and how it would fall under the proposed... It's changed since those were announced.
Oh, and it's changed again.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the website will have the up-to-date map.
Yeah, because it was going to change to something with residential, and I can tell you that is not the case. After my last conversation with Ms. Marshall, that was no longer the case.
Oh, well, that... I mean, it would only make sense.
And that was being driven a lot by your observations.
But also in our block, thank goodness, a wonderful asset to the community is the Adams County Arts Council.
Yeah.
There's a bed and breakfast. There's private residence, you know. We've got a lot of good services. When we need, you know, a lawyer or whatever, you can have the professional offices.
Yep. So it's appropriate to speak up, but I think where we're at in the process, the Planning Commission's the best place in time.
And when is the next Planning Commission meeting?
They meet...
Third Mondays.
Fourth Monday.
Fourth Monday. No, third Monday. Third Monday. Third Monday here.
Or Tuesday.
Yeah. Yeah, they meet the third Monday here each month. And that's going to be a lot of their topic for several months.
Okay.
Yet to go. Yeah, so they'll be able to speak more to all the details.
What time?
7:00. 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM, the third Monday.
December 18.
Yep, December 18 will be the next one. December 18 is the next one.
17.
18.
18, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Public comment? All right. Yep, Sue? Sorry.
Oh, with somebody else?
I don't know.
Sue Seppertley, 314 North Stratton. Your discussion of the parking apps, I have a definite opinion on apps because I don't use apps. And in some places in town, I can't park because I don't have the app on my phone. And I don't choose to pay a fee to use the app, and a lot of people don't. And the reason I've been told for the app thing is to cut down the cost of using meters. Well, you just had a discussion of who's going to pay for the cost of the convenience of using the app. So I think a lot of people, especially over 60 probably, don't use apps. A lot of people don't use apps. And from what I've heard and read letters to the editor and things, it's not always a popular option. So at least keep the option of cash. And in some, like on West Lincoln right now, in front of the Student Union Building, you cannot park without an app. And you end up on a 90-degree day walking a block and a half to a meter. So I just didn't go into the Student Union bookstore. So keep that in mind because I don't think taxpayers should have to pay for the use of the app. And I think your argument about the cost of meters is kind of a good illustration here that that's not necessarily the case, that the apps are cheaper. So I appreciate the thoughts that taxpayers should not be having to pay for people to use apps for parking, so that's all.
All right, seeing no further public comment, we will adjourn to executive session.